Okay, welcome everybody. We're going to start the evening with the two public hearings. We have a public hearing on ordinance 20-9 in the Northern Council of Chesapeake Beach, adopting the annual budget for the water park fund for the fiscal year to July 1/20 to June 30 of 21. Is there anybody from the public on the call that has any comments on this ordinance? Hearing none, I'll move to the next ordinance. Ordinance 20-10. In ordinance of the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach, Maryland, adopting the annual budget for the utility fund for the year July 1 to June 30 of 2021. Setting rates, charges and fees related to water and sewer service by the town. For the record, for the public, I anticipate two motions to be made due to the fact that the cost of the project at, of a project at the treatment plant has been reduced by $689,000. Is there anybody from the public that has any comments on this ordinance? Hearing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move to close the public hearing.
And, yeah, is, wait a second. Is Greg on the call?
Yeah.
Okay, well, thanks Greg. And following, so there, we have a few minutes now. Thank you, council, till the meeting starts. Greg, I'm going to do like I did with the other meetings in terms of just making it easier for the ordinary motions and seconds. Larry's going to make, you know, the motions if he can, and then I'll look to you to make those seconds.
Okay.
All right, thank you, then. I don't know where it will be next month, but we'll figure that out then.
Hey, Holly, was there a procedure change we needed to make with the agenda?
In terms of what?
Yes, I believe the mayor is going to address that.
Okay.
I can't see everybody there. Is Derek on the call?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, Derek's there, so we, so we have everybody, okay. All right, very good. And we're at seven o'clock, Sharon. So here we go. Welcome everybody to the Town Council meeting for May the 21st of 2020. Let the record read that the entire council, including the mayor, are present. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, and just as it crawls. All right, thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the ayes have it. At this point in time, we all ask the public if there's any, any item on the agenda that they, that they care to, to comment on. Give a couple of minutes for anybody on the call to speed up. Hearing none, I'll move to, I need approval of the minutes of the April 16th public hearings.
I'll move to approve, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Approval of the minutes of the April 16th Town Council meeting.
Move to approve, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. And lastly, approval of the minutes of the May 11th work session.
Move to approve, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the ayes have it. We're going to begin with the, the Town Administrator's report. Holly, do you have anything that sticks out that you want to let us know about?
Yes, so I, just a couple announcements for Town Council. Just letting you know that we are planning for a COVID-19 impact analysis for Town Council in the coming weeks. This will be before Town Council in June, so we will be reviewing any fiscal impacts for fiscal year 20 and fiscal year 21. Additionally, just wanted to remind the public that the Stars and Stripes Memorial Day Ceremony is going to be live, going live virtually on Monday, Memorial Day at 10 o'clock in the morning. So you can tune in on our YouTube channel, as well as, we're going to put a link on our website to the live Memorial Day event. I heard from the census group today and wanted to update the public as well that the town is still doing very well. We're higher than the state's average, still higher than the county's average, and our neighboring town of North Beach. However, we still have some work to do, so appreciate all of the residents' hard work in getting those self-responses in, and if we could please continue to do that. Thank you.
Okay. Public Works Report, we've read Jay's report. Is there any questions of Jay?
Questions.
I have a question of Holly, too.
Okay, we'll go back to the, let me shoot, Valerie asked a question of Holly.
Okay, thank you. My question regarding the water park. I know that it's closed, but have the staff been notified throughout this process about what is happening, or if there's going to be a short extension? Have the summer staff been communicated with?
Well, yes, we've been working, Marilyn and I have been working on that this week, and we have some responses that we're going to be sending to all staff members depending on their position to communicate some of the upcoming processes. Yeah, so.
But I know there's been some things among, you know, residents that get hired that they haven't heard, and so they've been wanting to know if they should look for other jobs.
Yeah, we'll be communicating with each staff member individually, depending on their role that they're playing at the water park.
Okay, just know that it's a concern since it, you know, in your next life, maybe that could have happened like next, last week or the week before. A little bit more warning.
Okay, thank you. Public Works Report. I know Greg, you said you had a comment?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Okay, hey Jay. The water leak in Richfield Station you had reported on recently, what was the cause of that?
It's actually electrolysis going through the copper lateral, and there's, there's been three of them since our last council meeting. I'm kind of investigating that right now.
Okay, that's, I know that you had said before that the new infrastructure towns worked on, they've kind of solved that problem using better materials, is that right?
Correct. We switched to HDPE from any forward build, but this is existing, so it's copper lateral.
Okay, I had, the ball fields, you said, it says that the north end stormwater replacement is complete. What, what work was done?
There's a wrinkled tin pipe, metal pipe from 26th Street that drains south, goes across that parking lot by the East Street Pump Station and into the north side of the ball field. That was all completely replaced with HDPE pipe. And now we're going to move to the south side and replace about another 150 feet, and that should take care of all the metal pipe in that place.
Seems like that, that work is relatively inexpensive. We didn't need to get involved in any of that, is that right?
Correct. None of that was to the point where we need to go out to bid or any of that. We pretty much did it in-house or with a local contractor.
Okay, thank you. The Heritage, you've reported the, I guess, base pavement, or some base pavement has been installed out there. And the reason I'm bringing this up is because there's existing base pavement that's been down and exposed to Richfield Station. I mean, it seems like a decade, and I'm not really sure how the integrity of base asphalt, you know, if it's exposed a long time like that, and then it finally gets topped out, bond gets released, and then that road gets turned over to the appropriate HOA. I know you don't foresee that the base paving there in the Heritage being exposed as long as it has in Richfield, but it is a concern.
Correct. Well, we've, we've taken steps moving forward with the next GWAs and different things. There's going to be inspections on the existing base paving, a walkthrough, and there's going to be areas addressed from exactly what you said, it's been out there for seven years.
Yeah, it's tough because that stuff gets turned over to the HOAs, a lot of, you know, when it's private like that, and they don't, haven't had a lot of say in, you know, the process, and we just want to make sure, and I'm just bringing it up, I know you've been working hard through these years, having to improve, improve processes. I'd like to have a discussion down the road somewhere, or maybe it's for the next council, whether or not we need to have some kind of construction standards officially established in town. But my last question, Jay, I actually know that was it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions of Jay? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the Water Reclamation, the Water Reclamation Treatment Plan Report. We've read John's report. Do we have any questions of John?
Question?
Shoot. Is John?
Yes, I'm Larry. Have we gotten any update from NDE on our proposed plans for covering the filters and the troughs?
No, I haven't heard a thing as of today. I haven't heard anything yet.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions of John? Hearing none, Code Enforcement Report, we've read Connie's report. Do we have any questions of Connie?
I have a question.
Shoot, sure.
My question is not related to your report specifically, Connie, but more about the, the current town stance on rental licenses as it relates to COVID. It's just not something that we've talked about, and I don't know if that belongs here, but it's something I'm kind of curious about. Are we sort of suspending short-term rental licenses, or are we doing anything to proactively limit Airbnbs and that sort of thing?
We don't have a short-term rental license in our town at all.
If someone was running an Airbnb right now, would that be stopped essentially? Is that what would happen?
If we could prove that, and depending on exactly where it's located, more than likely, yes.
Okay, all right, then it's moved, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Town Treasurer Report, I believe we have none. Town Engineers Report, we, we've read Wayne's report. Do we have any questions of Wayne?
Questions?
Yes.
All right, let me start with Derek's side of the table and work my way around.
All right, so I just asked for two updates on the 261 sidewalk, and then also the sewer lines and Highlands. Are there any updates? The, the report doesn't get into too much since we've talked last, so I just wondered if there's any updates on either one of those projects. And I guess I'm probably asking Holly if Wayne's not on.
Wayne is on.
Oh, is he? Okay, good.
Wayne's on, he's had to unmute himself. Yeah, there is no update on the 261 sidewalks of Memorial next month. On the Highlands, we did complete a base alignment map and a cost estimate for what, for what that would cost. The cost estimate was finished yesterday. More information on that, once, once we've had a chance to digest it, can give it to you.
The cost estimate for, could you be a little more specific, elaborate on that a little bit?
Sure, we prepared a cost estimate, or a budget, if you will, for serving the 38 homes in the Highlands that are within the town, as well as the 42 homes on West East End Drive. Basically, picking up all of the remaining homes on that side of town that are not currently connected. We completed that yesterday, and it's submitted. It includes construction costs, it includes an hearing budget, regulatory acquisition budget, and inspection budget.
So that would be separate from what the counties proposing?
It picks up the homes that the county was proposing, plus it also picks up everything in between, in between that community that the county was picking up and the existing reality sewer at 1G Street.
Okay, all right, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Wayne. Or Greg?
Keith, did you have, I don't know if Keith had anything?
No, go ahead, Greg, thanks.
Yeah, Wayne, thanks for dialing in this evening. As usual, we've got a very active Engineers Report here, and I had some questions. This is a general comment regarding the, we haven't really had an update on the Engineers' Report regarding the traffic signal at Richfield Station in some time. It appears to me as most of the construction, everyone else, that most of the construction's complete, and those lights are going to go in to effect within the next couple of months. There's been some community concern regarding the effectiveness of the Route 260 West Arrows, namely, the first one is your exiting the community, and you're just trying to avoid, doing everything that we all can to help avoid people making that wrong left turn. That's an incredibly dangerous situation, and there's some community concern about it. Obviously, there's a, it's a little bit of a hot topic here in the community right now. And we'd just like to try, I know awareness is high at that area, but in our discussions with State Highway, if they could just convey those concerns, and, you know, I know they reviewed and re-reviewed all of this stuff. We, everybody wants it to be the best that it can. Secondly, regarding the light, I wanted to inquire specifically about the programming of that light, and has there been any discussions of how that's going to go down? For example, is it only going to be blinking? Is it only going to be active during the evening rush hour? Or is, is it going to be, conversely, is it going to be blinking red light all other times, sort of thing?
I may be able to help here, Greg. I had a conversation with, with Kim Tran of State Highway recently, and A, she told me that they're looking at sort of a July, August, at the latest, you know, timeframe to go live. She said she, she gets two weeks notice, and she'll call me and Holly immediately when she gets that, and she said, pretty much like the weekend before, they do a blinking thing just to, to make sure it's working, and it's my understanding that that's going to be a traffic light 24 hours a day.
So, well, my next question is, is why a State Highway, this is directed to State Highway, have they considered keeping it a blinking red light at all other times where it's not a hazard necessarily, really, to, to make it across that there? And that's not going to get answered tonight, but I would like respectfully asking on behalf of all residents in Richfield Station, that they, if that's their plan, for them to reassess that plan. Because there could be something about sitting at a red light at 1:00 AM in the morning, it's just not going to sit well, and it doesn't make any sense, so.
I think that ship has sailed, Greg.
Sorry?
I suspect that ship has sailed, but we can certainly look into it.
Well, the programming can be changed at any time.
Yeah.
And I know State Highway is the one we got to follow with that.
Yeah.
And if they've got some good reasons why it's got to be on 24/7, the residents are definitely going to want to hear that, that reasoning. There's, and I guess this is for Wayne. Wayne, down in the middle or so in the report, Block S, I think this is in Richfield Station, there's a note here, C, traffic calming on Sandsbury Drive, work in agreement with applicant, who I presume is the developer, to remove this requirement. Can you explain what that is a little bit?
I have very limited knowledge of that. That's a letter, letter from Paul. That's something that we need to dig into, which quite frankly, I have not dug into yet, so I'm happy to do that and report back to you.
Yeah, I'd just like to know what that is. Jay commented already on quality control at the Heritage, and any future construction, for that matter, at Richfield Station. Regarding the Richfield Station water tower, I say this tongue-in-cheek to everybody, I don't want anybody to get concerned, but have there been any discussions in regards to painting the tower, to branding the tower? For example, the town of Chesapeake Beach being painted on it, or, or any, anything, you know, of that nature?
I, I remember having a conversation with, with Jay on that, I believe. Maybe Jay, I don't know if Holly, if you were in on that call. Jay, you remember I was talking about looking at that later, or I'll let Jay?
Sure, Mayor. We did, so I've had a, the, if you remember right, it was due to be painted before the State Highway Bridge project, and obviously that got delayed. So I've got a company came out, they did a latest and greatest survey that we can get ready to go out with an RFP, and after talking to different contractors, that would be the time to submit, let them have some stuff, I'm going to say off the shelf, and different custom things, and see what's available, just the generic lettering, or do we want to do something different? And when they step in, it's going to be a while prepping the tower, so we can think about what or if we want to put anything on there at that time.
Yeah, I can imagine one of our aerial overview recordings that make it to our website could capture. It'd be nice, town of Chesapeake Beach, kind of flying right by that down Fishing Creek, that would be pretty cool. My last question is really from Wayne again, and I think Wayne was involved in this early on, like a year or two back in Jay's stead, but there was some discussion last meeting regarding the limits of town maintenance and responsibility of constructed facilities serving the rod and reel property. I'm asking, respectfully asking Wayne to, he can come back to this at another time, but verify for the council that the service agreement that's in place currently with the rod and reel property in town of Chesapeake Beach regarding maintenance of the storm filter there, if that agreement includes a mechanism for the applicant to apply to the town eventually, for the town to take over maintenance of that filter. There's language in that agreement that I read that is a mechanism that affords the applicant that ability, once all the construction's done and the bonds are released. That's my understanding. You know, if that's completely untrue, definitely would like to hear that, but that's not what I read in the executed agreement.
Yeah, I don't believe that's true, but I'll let the Town Administrator speak to that.
Yes, and Wayne can confirm this as well, that that filter is 100% responsibility of rod and reel, not the town.
And there's, and there's no mechanism in the agreement for them to make application to the town to take over maintenance of that, once all the construction is done and bonds are released?
No.
None.
Okay, that's my last, that was my last comment, thank you.
All right, Larry?
Sorry, I had no questions on this one.
Okay, very good. Charlie, any questions?
No, I do not.
Okay, Valerie, any questions of the Town Engineer?
Yeah, I had the same concern that Greg had regarding the rod and reel, so I'm glad we got perpetuity, that going into perpetuity, the town will have absolutely no responsibility or potential for responsibility when it comes to maintenance on the rod and reel property or anything. Really good to hear, because it wasn't clear in the agreement that was assigned, so I'm glad that that's on the public record now. That's really good to hear. Good question, Greg. No, no questions.
All right, very good. Deputies Report, we, we see the report, I believe Sergeant Phelps is on the call. Do you have any question of Sergeant Phelps?
Comment?
Sir, go ahead.
Yeah, okay, I was just wondering if through the, through this period that we're all experiencing right now, shutdown, have they had to have much enforcement at the Brownies Beach closure?
Um, can you all hear me? Is this working?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, I was, I worked, we've got a couple calls this last weekend, we, and most of them were out of, out of county, of course, from Montgomery or Virginia and PG area, and they were on the beach. I don't know if people just can't read signs or what, but we've, deputies are doing their best to get there on an alley basis, as requested by the mayor and Holly, and make sure everyone, no one's there, but we've had several people there this past weekend, when deputies were tied up on calls, and they just, and they go and chase them off, and they go back later, and there's more people there. But they're not any residents that are doing that, it's mostly from out of county.
Thank you.
Any other questions of Sergeant Phelps?
Yeah, I have two, two things.
Shoot.
Number one, I want to follow up on what Greg asked, you know, what we, I live in Seagate, and what we're seeing, and I'm curious if other HOAs or other waterfront folks are seeing this, is we're seeing a little bit of the, we're bearing a little bit of the brunt of things being shut down, because people end up coming on to our property, our pier, or our waterfront areas to fish and whatnot. I would say, and Larry can, can jump in and correct me on this, I'd say we've taken a generally lenient stance on that, if people are behaving themselves, because A, it's, it's no skin off our teeth if people are out there behaving themselves, and B, it would become really a challenge to do that. I don't think we really want to bother the sheriff with all the other stuff you guys have going on, but it is something to be aware of. I don't know if other, I don't know if they're seeing that in Windward Key or other, other properties as well. I offer that more as a comment than anything else.
I have a comment on that, too, Charlie. You know, I live on, you know, by the rocks on the south end of town, and for, for years, many years, we have, we have Latin, we have a Latin population of visitors that come down and fish. They're the most quiet, well-behaved people I've, I've seen in town, and since I've lived here, and they kind of do their own thing, and, you know, eat their food and fish, and I don't know what, what they catch, so we've, we've kind of taken the same approach, we just kind of let them be, and, you know, life is good, so we cross our fingers every summer, but that, I guess that's, that's life on the water, you know?
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, I respect it, and I agree with it. In most cases, we have a little bit of a concern if people are actually on our pier because of the liability, you know, and that's kind of the world we live in. If someone, someone decides to jump off that pier and hurts themselves, we could bear some responsibility for that. But again, I agree with you from a, you know, philosophical point of view, the only thing we do is demand 10% of all, of all keepers for cooking.
Yeah, I heard that.
And I heard, the only thing I want to address is, I've always said, if anyone feels the need to call us, it is not a bother. So don't ever think that calling us is a bother. We're more than happy to respond, and if you do have problems or anything, give us a call. If you're, if you want to look the other way, that's fine with us, that's your property, but if, don't ever think it's a bother to call us.
Fair point, thank you. The question I had was about the, for a while, there was a slew of automobile break-ins, and they weren't really break-ins. I think you guys had really gotten down to the nut of it, of people going rifling through cars that were left unlocked. On your report this month, I see only one related sort of thing, but it was actually someone who smashed a window. And, you know, I lived for years in the city, this was sort of SOP, but I rarely see or hear about that around here. So I was just curious if you could comment on, has there been a decrease, or a sort of, some troublemakers are gone now that were doing the rifling through cars, and is that one window break-in, a windshield break-in, an anomaly? I'm just curious, because it caught my eye on the report.
Was that the Old Bay Side? Is that where it was located at?
It was, yes, on Old Bay Side.
Yes, Old Bay Side, it was a destruction of property report, but it was possibly linked to him mowing the lawn, but there's not proof otherwise. Possibly a rock being thrown from the mower to break his window, but the deputy went ahead and wrote a damage to property report, because there's no proof that it actually happened that way, but he, he said it was a gunshot, but we disproved that one, but we don't know how the window got broken. But as far as the other half of it, I think the, the break-ins, the auto, you know, going through cars that are left unlocked, have always been an ebb and flow, kind of occurrence, and it's usually people from out of town, like DC or PG, come down, and I think maybe with people with people being home a lot often right now, it's kind of stopped, but hopefully, you know, locking people's cars will, will make it also stop, is the other half of it, so.
Fair enough.
Last rash of break-ins that we had up in Richfield Station, arrests were made of juveniles out of Washington DC.
Yeah, that was actually a car, that was actually a whole, they stole the whole car, right?
Yeah, they stole, they stole the car, and they, they broke into a lot of cars that night, and they stole two cars that, that particular night, and they, both the cars had the keys left in them, and all the cars that they rummaged through were all left unlocked. But, but I will say that, that arrests were made in that, and I, I think that's, that's got, like you say, Tom brings up a valid point, that people are home, but I think the fact that the word gets out, we do have a sheriff that he will, he will give chase if we know that felonies have occurred such as that, and we will get after it, but fortunately we made arrests in this case, and hopefully that, that gets around, that they don't mess around in Calvert County, so.
Perfect, well, thank you, sirs, I appreciate the information.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions of our, our deputy report? Okay, move on to North Beach Volunteer Fire Department, I would do, if anybody has any questions, you know, get them to Larry. Larry, mayor's report? I have a couple things. I've been following the, the website that gives the COVID-19 cases reported by zip code, I've been following it daily since Easter Day, when it first came out, and that was April the 12th, and I gotta tell you, this thing is still here, everybody, the, the numbers that are reported per our zip code is, in five and a half weeks since Easter Day, April 12th till now, our numbers have increased from 13 to 28, so that's more than double. In the last, in the last seven days, our numbers have increased from 23 to 28. I realize that people are getting, you know, tested more, but up is up, and, and up is not good. And that kind of segues me into what I read in the Washington Post today, that they were, were talking about people from the DMV, from highly infected areas, you know, leaving their stay at home, breaking the law in their home county or state, and, and, you know, traveling to places like ours, the, and I'm gonna quote the Washington Post today, "The increase in travel from the coronavirus hotspots underscores concerns among public health experts." And it goes on to say that Maryland counties with beaches, boating, and outdoor recreation saw the biggest jumps in traveling. So, to me, all I want to say is, this is kind of a lose-lose situation, our numbers are going up, and people from very highly infected areas are, are coming down, so our battle's not over, but I just wanted to make that part of my report. I want to thank the, I want to thank the entire staff, there's somebody in the background probably needs to mute or something, there's, I want to thank the entire staff for keeping this town running so smoothly, they've all just done an amazing job, each one of them, those on the call and everybody else. I want to thank the citizens for understanding the sacrifices that need to be made, and appreciating the tough choices that are made in the interest of public health. As Memorial Day approaches, we all appreciate our fallen heroes who made the ultimate sacrifice to protect our freedoms, so let's, we'll keep that in mind when we're making these little minor, you know, sacrifices from our usual lifestyle. Thank you very much. Next portion, vote to remove from the table ordinance O-20-7, in order to the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach adopting the annual budget for the water reclamation treatment plant of the town of Chesapeake Beach for fiscal year July 1/20 to June 30 of 21. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Okay, now we go to the ordinance that has been untabled. Vote on ordinance O-20-7, in order to the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach adopting the annual budget for the water reclamation treatment plant of Chesapeake Beach for the fiscal year July 1/20 to June 30 of 21. After we get a motion as second, there will, I'm expecting a couple amendments, so is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second?
Any amendments? That'd be you, Larry.
I had an amendment, I'm sorry.
Yeah, did you misplace it, or? I didn't hear you.
I didn't have an amendment.
Okay, well, we just talked about this, but I'll, I'll, I'll make it.
I can make it, I got it right here.
All right, go ahead, sir.
All right, I make a motion to amend ordinance 020-7, FY 21, Water Reclamation Treatment Plant Exhibit A under income to change line number 300-430010, the Anna Rundle fixed costs, which is a decrease by 10.44% from $108,000, or $108,190 to $30,862. You want all four of them, or you just want this one, or all six of them?
All, all of them.
Okay, second is to amend line 300-430020, which is to Calvert County, fixed line to decrease by 21.81% from $208,410 to $59,453. Line 300-430030, which is Chesapeake Beach, fixed, decreased by 49.66% from $474,537 to $135,372. Line number 300-430040, it's North Beach, fixed income line, decreased by 18.09% from $172,863 to $49,313.
Derek, if I could just stop you right there for, for the record, that, we're not done with that motion, but those percentage numbers is basically their, their ownership in the plant, that's how, how the line item reads.
It's not a decrease, that's their ownership.
That's correct.
Right, but we're decreasing the, the funding line in the budget.
Right, but not by that percentage amount.
By that percentage.
Right.
Correct.
All right, okay, go ahead.
All right, resulting in a new total capital and other fixed income line now becomes $275,000, and also results in a new total income line, which becomes $2,085,120.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I think the motion was seconded.
Yeah, I didn't hear that, I'm sorry.
Well, the amendment, the motion to amend.
Yeah, yeah.
I apologize.
Yeah, second with discussion.
Yeah, I did hear a second, did, did you make a, okay, well, Greg had the second, okay, we'll start with Derek.
No, no discussion for me.
Keith?
No discussion.
Greg?
Is this something, is this something that we went over before? I don't remember this.
Yes, this is exactly what we went over in a work session.
Okay, I apologize, no questions.
Yeah, any other questions of council?
Not a question, just a comment, just to sort of reply to Mr. Morris, what we're dealing with here is a change in a proposed project cost, we're still working out, the town is still working out the details of what's going to need to be done, but rather than including the total of the entire project in this FY 21 budget, the agreement, or the decision was made to separate the project into a couple steps, so while you see a fairly significant decrease in this item here, it's because some of the costs will be deferred to future FYs.
Yeah, I, I remember that discussion, and that all made sense during the work session. I guess what threw me off was the series of motions to change the original sheet, that's how you handle it, instead of just creating a new sheet and a new ordinance, I don't know if that's what you'd had it done, but instead making the multiple amendments to conform to what we had discussed.
For the record, we did both, you have an amended Exhibit A, and, and the motions that are being made are, you know, reflected on the amended Exhibit A, and they're appropriate for what we're doing right now.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any more questions?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I have a question, and it'll be a quick one, but I, my recollection is that there was a concern that, that, that MDA would not approve this, and are we moving forward anyway, or, or am I misunderstanding that concern?
Well, I'll, I'll try to answer it, okay, I, I answered, I addressed this at the work session as well, this is pretty much how we feel it's going to happen.
So, okay, you did say that, actually, okay, fair enough.
Any other questions?
Yes, and when do we expect to hear from MDA?
Could you repeat that?
When do we expect to hear from them, the state?
I think.
We sent our response April 30th, so I would, I would hope that they would respond at least by the end of the month.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any ayes have it? Derek, you have another motion in this?
Yes, a second, a second motion to amend the same ordinance, Exhibit A, under the expense lines, line 300-6975-80100, which Capital Projects amended from $964,000 to $275,000, which results in a new total other fixed cost of $275,000, and a new total expense of $2,085,120.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Any questions of the council? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes have it? Okay, so now we have an amended ordinance, which is, which has been seconded, so do we, do we have any questions on the amended ordinance before we vote? Hearing none, all those in favor of the amended ordinance O-20-7, say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes have it? Okay. And that's that, so moving on, vote on ordinance O-20-9, in order to the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach adopting the annual budget for the water park fund for the fiscal year July 1 to 20 to June 30 of, of 21.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Well.
Okay.
Yes, I'm, I'm just, when are we going to take into account, or will we have to take into account any lost revenue, since we do not know when the water park is opening in this budget, or are we just gonna kind of like hope for the best? I mean, do we have a schedule to open the water park?
I'm, I'm going to guess that we're probably, at some point in time in the next fiscal year, there'll be some, some needed changes that we'll have to amend the ordinance in one way or another, we don't, at this point, know when the water park is going to open, that's one of the things we're going to speak about in the executive session later, but the idea, the, you know, the clean and proper way to do it is to pass the ordinance and then address it as a council as it comes along, whatever that is. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any ayes have it? Vote on ordinance O-20-10, in order to the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach adopting the annual budget for the utility fund for the fiscal year July 1 to 20 to June 30 of 21, and setting rates, charges, and fees related to water and storage services by the town. I, I think after we, we get a second, there'll be a couple of motions, which I'll ask Derek to make again, but is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Derek, do you have any amendments for us?
Two motions to amend, the first one, motion to amend ordinance 020-10, fiscal year 2021 Utility Fund Exhibit A, under revenues other, to change line number 400-430140, which is the unallocated reserves from utility fund MLGIP, from $1,359,309 to $1,494,681, which brings a new total other income line to $2,932,829, and a new total income line, which becomes
Hey, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Question?
Question?
Yes, sir.
What's driving the change?
Everything driving this, I, I'll let the town administrator speak to, but I mean, what's driving the changes, is this whole project?
Right. There's an impact to the utility fund based on the change to the treatment plan.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, and any other questions on the, on the first motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any ayes have it? I believe we have a second motion?
Second motion to amend same ordinance fiscal year 2021 Utility Fund Exhibit A under expenses to change line number 400-6900-6700, which is the TFP fixed costs from $558,657, changed to $694,029, which results in a total expenses line now of $2,64,261, and a final total expenses line of $3,924,869.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 The ayes have it, so now we have an amended ordinance, and we're, which has a, which also has a, has a second, so we're going to vote on the amended ordinance O-20-10. Any questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right, okay, and the ayes have it. Thank you. Somebody buy Derek a, a glass of water. Reports of officers, boards, and committees, planning a zoning, no meeting held, Board of Appeals, no meeting held, economic development, Larry?
Yes, you have a report in your pack, I won't go over that, but there's been an awful lot going on in terms of trying to help our local residents and businesses. As stated in the report, the mayor and town staff are making every effort to support town residents and local businesses, there's been, as mentioned in this report, numerous virtual meetings with county and state representatives, there's one as recently as this past Monday with county economic development staff, they have developed a document called Navigating Our Recovery for the County, that was discussed with the county commissioners on Tuesday, they expect to make that document public as soon as next Tuesday, and I will work with Holly to get that posted on our site as soon as possible. That document's going to discuss a number of things, including business recovery programs, the creation of a virtual business recovery site, assisting businesses, business owners with business assistance, and mobilization of industry-specific task forces, so again, the county is doing everything it can to try and help. I refer anybody to go to our town website under general and COVID-19, and there's a lot of information there for residents and businesses. One of the things I found, I don't know if interesting is the right word, maybe distressing is the right word, is the challenges that are facing our businesses in reopening, and that includes things like, in order to receive funds from the Payment Protection Program, which I think we've all heard of, you have, the business has to use that money to pay their employees to come back to work. The problem that a number of the businesses are facing is that some of their employees are making more money on unemployment than they are if they came back to work, so they are reluctant to do that. Add to that complexity is the fact that with schools and daycare closed, a lot of the parents simply can't come back to work, they've got nothing to do with their kids, so it's a continuing challenge, and I just wanted to assure everybody that, again, the mayor and the town staff are doing everything possible to just share as much information as we can with our residents and our local businesses. Thank you.
Sure. Twin Beach opioid abuse awareness, Keith?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So, our group has not met, of course, during the COVID-19. during the COVID-19 closures, but, uh, I did have a chance to teleconference with Dr. Drew Fuller, the lead for the, um, Calvert County Health Department's Recovery Rapid Response Program and their mobile crisis team, just to talk a little bit about, um, how we could do more outreach in the beaches area, and that's still under development, but I did want to share a couple of things he, he shared with me. Um, they continue to do quite a bit of outreach regarding their Recovery Rapid Response Program. They're going to be having a commercial on the local public channel, a radio spot, as well as a billboard, uh, that's going to go up in Dunkirk, uh, advertising the program. And so, you know, with that said, I did want to clarify that their Recovery Rapid Response Program is not just for people suffering from addiction. It's also for folks, um, having issues with mental health, um, issues. And so, you know, he's encouraging anyone, um, who, who is having difficulty in those areas to call their, their number. It's 877-467-5628. They are taking calls seven days a week from 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM. They'll help streamline access to recovery services. And they also provide urgent same-day care, uh, or should same-day opiate treatment through their mobile crisis team. And they, and they provide telehealth service if you have access to a webcam, either through iPhone, Android or your computer. And again, that number is 877-467-5628. And that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Walkable Community Advisory Group, Derek?
All right, thank you. Uh, so our group has not met either, uh, in the last month. And, uh, our planning firm continues work on the Walkability Master Plan that they've been working on for a while, but I don't have any updates to share at this time on, on their progress. I will plan to update that next month.
Thank you, sir. Okay, um, no one finished business, new business. Town Council to award to Windmill Farms for Light Up the Town installation for a five-year term for a total of five-year amount of $264,750. Your motion to approve?
Sorry. Move to approve. Second.
Discussion, anybody? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any ayes have it? Town Council to award a contract to Wires Incorporated for Light Up the Town Display Electrical Connection Contract for a five-year term for a total five-year amount of $76,050.
Move to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any ayes have it? We love them Christmas lights. Okay. At this time, uh, I'm going to ask the, anybody who may have called in from the public, if they have any comment. Hearing none. I'm going to go to the, uh, the council lightning round. I'll, I'll start with, uh, Vice President Bowdy.
Oh, yes. I'd just like to encourage all the residents to continue to take care, take precautions. Wear your mask when you're outside. Uh, go outside, get some fresh air. And also have one request of the town. Um, if you can put on the, uh, site on the blast where you can get the, the boat ramp hang, hang tags since the town hall is closed. I've had questions about that. So just put on the, on the, um, on the blast where you can get hang tags for town of Chesapeake Beach residents for the boat ramp. That'd be great.
Charlie?
Uh, you know, I, I feel like this has been the longest May ever. And not just because of COVID. Am I the only one that still has to wear a sweatshirt and long pants outside and Memorial Day is around the corner?
I hear you.
I, um, you know, I, I encourage everyone safe, to be safe, but to get out, to try to pretend that summer is coming uh, and stay healthy and, and engaged as well. Because staying home alone or, um, out of contact is not a good plan long-term. And as, as our mayor pointed out, we're, we're not, we're not out of the woods yet, so there's still time to go. I wish everyone to be safe and, uh, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Larry?
Couple of things. Uh, one of the lessons I learned in that Climate Change Academy that I completed a while, but is the significant impact we humans have on global climate change. Anyone who doubts that humans can impact forces that are accelerating our climate change, need to just look at the recent news of the clearing of skies over urban areas. People are seeing vices that they haven't been able to see in decades. There's fish swimming in the canals in Venice. CO2 levels were recently reported to have decreased by 17%. That said, obviously that's all going to change as we slowly begin to resume to go back to work, which we need to do. But if there is any doubt that we can do something to impact our climate, this should be a good lesson to learn. On a lighter note, for the record, I'd just like to report that the Chicago Cubs are undefeated this season. And finally, everyone stay safe and stay healthy.
Go Cubs. Greg?
Yeah, I had a number of things that wanted worthwhile mentioning now. Try to be brief. Uh, I wanted to comment on the Walkable Community Group there and the efforts that, that they've put a lot of, a lot of effort behind in this primary project that seems to be taking a long time on the state there. But interconnectivity for residents, I think, is more important than ever. Uh, and, uh, we should be pushing hard, um, to expand on that for their benefit. Uh, I wanted to make sure that I, I forgot to mention, I was really pleased that Windmill Farms, um, has got that contract again. They've taken such good care of the town through the years. They've always got the town looking really good. Um, it's just stuff that I notice. I know other people see it going in and out. You just feel good driving in and out of our town and they're one of the reasons. And I'd like, uh, there's a little joke here, but everybody, uh, that has not completed their census, please raise their hand. All right, I see no hands raised, so, um-
We're good.
I'd like to encourage everybody to encourage somebody that you know that may not have completed the census. Please, it's all important. The, uh, also wanted to remind everybody that, uh, we've got a video feed live for the Memorial Day, uh, ceremony. I believe that's correct, right, Holly? Uh, 10:00 AM this coming Monday or is, yeah, so I'll be there. Wherever you are, folks, uh, please share and enjoy your Memorial Day Ceremony morning with us online. Uh, that video will be available afterwards. And then that's all that I have. Uh, everybody have a, have a great, have a great weekend, please. Thanks.
Okay. Keith?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, uh, wanted to thank the first responders for everything they've done for folks during this crisis with a special shout-out for, uh, those on the front lines. And, you know, during my lockdown here at home, I've, I've been shopping a lot more at Roland's than perhaps I have in the, in the past. And, uh, you know, I really appreciate all those, uh, the folks working at the checkout counters. They're exposed to hundreds of people every day coming in to buy food, essential things that we all need. And so I just wanted, wanted to, you know, thank them and, uh, everybody stay safe.
Thank you, sir. And Derek?
All right, thank you. Uh, I just wanted to share a couple of comments that I've received in particular over the last few weeks, uh, related to, you know, how the services and the interactions with the town have been very consistent, you know, through, throughout these, in these last two months. And, and Mayor, you mentioned it a little bit earlier as well, but, uh, you know, quarantine and, you know, that, that's harder on some than others, but if you think about it, you know, basic services that we come to expect and don't really think about, you know, trash pickup, water, sewer, all those things, you know, we, you know, Jay, well, Jay might disagree with me, but I mean, that, that process has been, you know, essentially the same, exactly the same as, as it was prior to, you know, everything, you know, with, with some minor exceptions that Jay always has to deal with. Uh, so that's really, you know, it really speaks volumes for how the town takes care of its citizens. And I just think that, that, and I know Mayor, you did as well, but I think everyone involved in that with the town, town staff, uh, really should be applauded for that.
Amen. Okay, uh, Derek, I, uh, I thought for sure you were going to mention that, that we've had, that we passed four budgets, four years' worth of budgets.
Well, I'd like to do that in person, so.
I hear you. Okay, all right.
I'll, I'll save that in case we have to amend one of these other ones later.
Sounds good, sir. Okay, um, we're gonna, we're gonna go into, to, to close session. I, I need a, a, a motion to close the deregular meeting under Statutory Authority of Maryland Etiquette Code pursuant to General Provisions Article 3-305B, Subsection 7, to consult with council to obtain legal advice pertaining to town assets.
Move to close the general meeting.
A second with a comment.
Well, this is a, this is, this is, this is a move to go to the closed session.
Yeah, I understand.
Hold on, Greg. Hold, hold, hold. I'm talking to Larry. Larry, I'm not sure you made the proper motion.
I said move to close the general meeting.
Right, that, that's not the proper-
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll say.
I need a motion to go into closed session.
My apologies. Move to go into closed sessions.
Second.
And you had a question, Greg?
Yeah, just to, uh, I, at the beginning of the meeting, there was some scuttlebutt regarding, will we need to sign back into the regular meeting to adjourn this meeting?
Right, and the answer is no.
Okay.
We, the answer is no. Okay. All right, um, all in favor of going to closed session, say aye.
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 Very good. We have to, uh, approved. We have to go, uh, sign out of here and go into the other link for the closed session.
See you soon.
See y'all then.